Commission meeting for May 19th will come to order, please. Roll call, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault. Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Kahler.
Present. Tonight, it is my honor to introduce Mike Resnick, President of Temple Israel Board of Trustees, to do our invocation. And pledge of allegiance tonight. Commissioner Rhodes, will you lead that, please?
Eternal One, we are grateful to you for everything that we have, from our very lives to the great fortune that we have to live in America, the United States of America, the birthplace of democracy and the federal republic form of government, where we have the right to vote, to determine our leadership, and to express in public the extolling of the virtues or lamenting the shortcomings of the eventual winners. We hope that you will continue to be a source of hope and inspiration to us as we move off into the future. And we ask perhaps a little extra consideration for the members of the commission, as it is a matter of public record, how they vote to spend other folks' money. I'm in.
I'm in. Thank you, Mike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a proclamation tonight for historic preservation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people; and whereas we celebrate each May as National Preservation Month, co-sponsored by the City of Paducah, the Kentucky Heritage Council, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I, Gail Kahler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as National Preservation Month and Kentucky Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Paducah to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation. Signed, Gail Kahler, Mayor, May 12, 2015. And I've certainly done my part for that, too, Melinda, so I'd like to give this to you. Congratulations. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Want to see?
Yes. Thank you so much for the recognition of National Historic Preservation Month. Historic preservation is one of the fundamental principles of the Main Street program, and the historic tax credits are such an important tool for all of our revitalization efforts, so I just want to thank you for that. And also, I also want to thank you for the additional support that you have provided to Main Street and the Planning Department with the other programs that help us in our efforts to assist the property owners with their historic properties. So thank you for that, all of you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm going to do a brief presentation, just real quick, on what Paducah, Main Street, has going on with a few of the events, just real briefly.
Just hit the right here.
Okay. Again, this year, we are going to do our Smashing Summer Saturday series. It will be an 11-week series that starts May 30 through August 1. This creates the fun vibrant downtown on Saturdays during the day. So we are, you know, partnering up with the farmer's market. We have the free market-to-market carriage. We'll have music in the gazebo, sidewalk sales, a lot of fun downtown again. New this year, we are adding on the Saturday nights that we do not have the Live on the River. We are going to have music in the gazebo, and this is the schedule. This will actually start this Saturday night as a kickoff with Memorial Day weekend. We'll have Captain Freddy and the River Cats in the gazebo from 6 to 8, and we have someone scheduled there through August 8. Meet the Artists, this is a new event. We are having this, working with a large group of partners on this. We have the Chamber that's partnered with us, PED. It's, we've got 53 area artists that will be at this event. It's going to be at the Historic Coca-Cola Plant on June 18 from 4 to 8. You may have already received your invitations in the mail. I do believe they went out. So we are very excited about this, and the CVB is helping us market it, and it's going to be a great event, and I hope you all can attend. Showcase Paducah. I presented to the Realtors Luncheon on Friday and talked about their important role in Showcase Paducah, so this will be our second Showcase Paducah we're having at July 18 this year, 10 to 4. And I'm already getting a lot of phone calls for people that want to be part of this for open houses or grand openings for new businesses, so we're excited about this one, too. And that is a wrap-up of it for now.
The other day, Melinda, I had a question from someone about, is the farmer's market open every day?
I believe it, I believe she does have everyday hours, but Saturdays is really the main focus day where the majority of the vendors come in on Saturdays.
Well, I tried to explain that they grow their food, and right now, the growing season, you know, there's not a lot growing right now.
I think May 30 is really going to be the big kickoff for it, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a matching grant in the amount of $500,000 from the Department of Local Government for a Community Development Block grant for the demolition of 432 Broadway be adopted.
Second. Steve.
As you're aware, we've started down the process of trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is to make sure that we're in line with an application for the CDBG. If we decide to go forward, this municipal order will actually allow us to apply in the near future if we choose to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Ordinance is adopted. We'll run through these pretty fast. We've already discussed these. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, funds to be allocated toward the Riverfront Improvement Project Phase 1B and authorizing the mayor to execute same. This ordinance summarizes follows. The City of Paducah, Kentucky hereby approves an agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the reimbursable federal highway funding in the amount of $3,920,000 for the Riverfront Improvement Project Phase 1B and authorizes mayor to execute said agreement.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, for construction of the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Jim Smith Contracting Company, LLC, in the amount of $6,380,137.04 for construction of the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac, Inc., for sale to the City of one new 2015 front-loading refuse collection chassis and body for use by the solid waste collection system, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of McBride Mac, Inc., in the amount of $228,830 for sale to the City of one new 2015 front-loading refuse collection chassis and body, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, I mean Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac Incorporated for the sale to the City, one automated side-armloader for use by the Solid Waste Division Public Works Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City accepts the bid of McBride Mac Incorporated in the amount of $249,555 for the sale to the City of one automated side-armloader for use by the Solid Waste Division Public Works Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay AES Environmental LLC for the disposal of household hazardous waste collected during the City-County Free Cleanup Day. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay AES Environmental LLC in the amount of $22,824.50 for the disposal of household hazardous waste collected during the City-County Free Cleanup Day.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler.
Aye. Ordinance is introduction. We have two of those tonight. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, by intent to annex certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah and defining acutely the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Approving intent to annex certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2855 Lone Oak Road and 91 Plantation Drive, containing 5.939 acres more or less.
Second.
This is a consensual annexation. The property owner of Banks Market and adjacent strip centers requested the annexation. After completion of this ordinance, we'll be going to the Planning Commission at a public hearing, where the Planning Commission will assign zoning. After the zoning, we'll come back to the City Commission for a final annexation ordinance and zone change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news.
Good news, yes. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Bluegrass Uniforms for the purchase of body armor vests for police officers, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Bluegrass Uniform for the purchase of body armor vests in the amount of $740 per vest, and authorizes the mayor to execute a two-year contract for said purchase.
Second. Aye.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This is our biannual contract that we have to purchase our body armor vests that the officers wear underneath their uniform shirts. This bid price submitted by Bluegrass Uniforms being the lowest bid was the award winner.
Those are pretty lightweight, aren't they?
Yeah, three or four pounds each.
Are they hot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commercial hot, yeah.
Feel good in the winter, but not in the summer?
You're exactly right, yeah.
But it keeps you safe?
It keeps us safe, so they're willing to wear them.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have our workshop, and tonight is an overview of tax increment financing legislation, which is a tool that we have for economic development. And Steve, you're going to do an overview for us? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. A brief overview of tax increment finance in Kentucky, and the information that I'm giving you has actually come from the Cabinet for Economic Development through the Commonwealth. TIF is a tool to use future gains in taxes to create finance, the current improvements that will create those gains. When a TIF project is carried out, there is an increase in the value of real estate and often new investment that's created as part of that TIF. This increases site value and investment creates increases in values of taxable properties, which increases tax revenues. Their increased tax revenues are the tax increment. TIF is designed to channel funding towards public improvements in distressed or underdeveloped areas where development may not otherwise occur, and for redevelopment assistance within a local development area. It is quite often used to jumpstart improvements in declining or underperforming urban areas where development may not otherwise occur. But for often is used when talking about TIFs. Development would occur if something is slowing the startup of that development, and that's what the but-for is. The first step in establishing of a TIF development area by a city or county or other identified agency, the statute, the statutes authorize two types of TIF development areas. There's a local development areas, and then there's also the state participation programs. There's three types of the local development areas. The first is the local-only development areas. The second is blighted urban redevelopment areas. And the third is vacant land within, with a 5,000-seat arena. The last was most recently added with the legislation in 2007. Type 1, the local-only development area, it's established by a local government on vacant land. Local, which can be city or county government, may pledge up to 100% of incremental property taxes and occupational license taxes or fees for up to 20 years. Increments in school and fire district taxes cannot be pledged as part of this one. Pledges within local-only development areas shall not be eligible for Commonwealth participation. The land must be previously undeveloped tract of land. The maximum size cannot exceed 1,000 acres. Total amount of property within the TIF development area cannot exceed 20% of the total value of taxable real property within the jurisdiction. Some of the uses of the local incremental revenues, local incremental revenues from the local development area or development area may be used to pay for project cost and/or redevelopment assistance within the local development area or development area. Local incremental revenues may be used to pay for private costs related to a development in addition to public infrastructure costs needed to support the development. Local incremental revenues may be used for payment of incremental bonds issued by city to pay for certain specified projects needed for the overall development. The type 2, local development area, it's redevelopment blighted areas into mixed-use development. It is established by local government. It must meet two of seven specified blight deterioration conditions established in CARES 65-7049. Have a few of them below its abandonment or deterioration of structures, presence of environmental contaminated land, inadequate or deteriorated public infrastructure, and also there are some low to moderate income regulations as part of that also. Local government, city or county, may pledge up to 100% of incremental property taxes and occupational license taxes or fees for up to 30 years in this one. It's eligible for state participation if they meet certain requirements. When you're, anytime you start talking about state participation, you also start talking about public purpose and what those funds are being used for. The maximum size cannot exceed three square miles. Total amount of property within the TIF development area cannot exceed 20% of the total value of taxable real property within the jurisdiction. Number three, it's applicable to jurisdictions that have a 5,000-seat arena and wish to develop adjacent vacant lands, which obviously in Paducah, we don't. The general requirements and processes for TIF. The city must find, as part of findings of fact, that the area cannot be reasonably expected to be developed without public assistance, and the development's public benefit justifies the public cost. The city or county must also find either that the area immediately surrounding the tract has not been subject to growth, redevelopment through private enterprise, or that there are special circumstances preventing development. They must adopt a development plan, which shall include a description of existing land uses. There has to be a map, legal description, proposed uses within the development. There has to be compliance with zoning and comprehensive plan and all other CARES 100 compliance. The city and or county must also hold a public hearing to receive input regarding the development plan, and then the city must, or county must adopt an ordinance approving the TIF. General requirements and process continued. An application must be submitted to KEDFA identifying the special program if state assistance is requested. Remember, the very first local option, state assistance is not requested, so you do not have to get state approval. The documents include to be sent to them would be a copy of an ordinance, a copy of a local participation agreement, and data supporting the findings required to establish a development area. There are three types of state, and this is the last slide, TIF state participation programs. State participation is limited to a specific project with a blighted urban redevelopment or vacant land with a 5,000-seat arena, and those are the three types. Kentucky Participation Program for Real Property Ad Valorem Tax Revenues, Kentucky Participation Program for Signature Projects, and Kentucky Participation Program for Mixed-Use Redevelopment in Blighted Urban Areas. And I've not gone through all the requirements as part of this presentation on those last three. At any time you would like some additional information on that, I'd be happy to forward it on to you. I also have some handouts for you that, a lot of the information that you've read, this comes from. Thank you. And also, on the Kentucky Economic Development side, the different options that I went through, all of those are broken out with the different requirements for each one.
Steve, what are, like, some examples of blighted? Is that in here? What would be considered a blighted urban area? I guess I see it right over here.
I'm sorry.
Page 4, 3.
Typically, with any type of state programs, there's a definition section within the legislation that actually defines what blighted would mean. Blighted can mean a variety of things. It can mean condition of structures, condition of infrastructure, I would think. So there could be a variety of things that would qualify as blighted.
With the, with the local, with the local TIF, which doesn't require any state participation, they've made that available to municipals. It says here, all local development areas are subject to the following conditions. The first one there, the land must be a previously undeveloped tract of land. So where blighted may be one part, if a piece of property is undeveloped, that will qualify.
I think according to interpretations that we've had, Commissioner, that's essentially true. Undeveloped is the key there. Blighted is probably not the operative word in terms of the condition of the land. Undeveloped, it seems, suffices for that.
Right.
And what was the part about undeveloped that, and probably could not be undeveloped, that you had up on the?
Well, I think that was...
Without a TIF.
Yeah, that's the but-if, I think. And basically, that's saying that the property will have a hard time developing as other urban space happens because of something that's going on with the property. There's a reason for that happening, and that it would be in the best interest of the public, a TIF being adopted to help promote redevelopment of that site.
Okay, and then the TIF money can be used, it's not specific to roads or anything specific on the infrastructure? What could...
With each of the different TIF programs, there's different requirements on how, what the money can be used for. When you start getting into the state TIFs, where they're a partner within the program, it becomes much tighter on what those funds can be used for. The local option, there is more latitude with the commission and the findings of fact on what those monies can be used for.
So it could be used to purchase the property? It could be used to help clear the property?
I think anything that would contribute to creating the economic impact from the project, contrasted with your local property tax reimbursement ordinance, which is specific only to qualifying public infrastructure, which typically would be roads, sewer systems, that sort of thing. The TIF local development option is much more broad. You have a lot more latitude to determine, in your minds, what it is of the project expenses, typically capital, that make a positive impact on the economic return from the project.
And the word "may," you may contribute, but you don't have to.
I'm sorry.
The word "may" in there, as far as what you can contribute.
You mean percentage?
Right.
Right.
So that's negotiable on a TIF, how much you contribute.
And so, it's, property taxes absolutely are contributed to it. The payback, the occupational tax, the payroll tax, is optional?
It's, it's, it's all optional.
As business, okay. So the only thing that's guaranteed is the property tax goes back to...
And occupational, if you decide to, under local development.
Right, but under local development, property tax is optional. I mean, property tax goes to it, occupational tax is optional.
The amount.
I believe so. I believe it's up to the commission with adoption of the ordinance of what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
You can do either or.
It's not required, okay.
I think you could do payroll tax and not property, but it's really your call which of the two, or which combination of the two, and then how much of each, and for how long for each. Essentially, typically, the way these project proposals come to you is it's with a total dollars request, and then the city would determine to its own satisfaction how you want to generate that between one of those combinations, or some combination there, of choice of taxes and period of time that she would extend the, I guess it's the abatement of taxes, essentially, or allow the taxes, tax payments to be generated back into the It's not, it's something that...
Kentucky's kind of getting into the TIF.
Yeah, relatively late to it. It's been around for a long time in other states, and I will say that it's used much more extensively in most states than it appears to be in Kentucky. I would say also, having worked with this program in several states, that the Kentucky legislation or the statute for the local TIF is quite broad, quite permissive. A lot of the same things that you see anywhere else, but I think it puts comparatively quite a bit of decision-making authority with the local body to determine to your own satisfaction. a bit of decision-making authority with the local body to determine to your own satisfaction. As, quite frankly, the state economic development statutes in other regards give you broad latitude to determine what you think makes an economic impact in your community, and we've done that in many other regards, and the same is true with TIF. So I think it's, the power there is pretty broad.
The, this was, I guess, redone in 2007. This, 2000, I think, was when, whatever criteria it was before, 2007, they changed it, which would allow local municipals to have a little broader impact on what they wanted to do. And a lot of times, on a local level, we don't have, we don't have that option. The state says that, okay, you can't implement this tax because you're not a certain class of city. And we look around and we see folks doing that. This is a tool, just reading the history of it, this is a tool that allows municipals to, you can use this for economic development if the certain project meets the criteria. And I think that's an opportunity. And if we have a project that meets that criteria, and then we have the option to, how much money we want to participate in, and how much and how long, then that's, the ball's in our court to do that.
So this might be putting you on the spider, just asking. I think, I know Bowling Green has like what's called a signature TIF. It's over a $200 million investment. Is that right? Or I don't know what the minimum is for that, but there's a certain level for signature?
Sure, there is.
Is that a state TIF they have?
There's state increments involved in that process, so that is a very large TIF. Yes, that's correct. There's 27, I believe, state.
There are 27 across the state currently?
The entire state. A lot of those are based in Louisville-Lexington area.
So TIFs always have to have some kind of tax revenue that's paying back?
Well, the...
For the development.
There's the baseline at the start of the TIF, and then the projected expenditures that creates the new value in the property, and the increment is between the baseline and the new value. So that's what the increment is.
So it's money you're not getting anyway because it's undeveloped, correct? That's kind of the premise of it. You're not getting that money anyway.
Right.
But those can't be used for public projects?
Certainly.
They can be?
A TIF, yes. Quite often, they are used for public infrastructure projects.
But they can't be used for like a big sports complex?
Well, I have some experience with that. In a previous city, we actually built a municipal golf course with one, created a large housing development, and sold off the lots for new home construction, and then the property taxes that were paid from the homeowners went to pay off the bonds that were sold to build the public golf course. So it was a, you know, a public improvement.
But you'd have to have something that had property tax coming in.
Yeah, and I mentioned that the housing development was part of the project along with the golf course, so the new housing starts, created property tax revenue, and that revenue was diverted. That's out there, out on the limb a little ways where TIF projects are concerned, but it's been used pretty creatively. Yeah.
Well, I think that's, pardon my interruption, but that's the broadness of it, that allows local municipalities creative within that, within that TIF to do some things.
You can think of another application, for instance, an industrial park, where the infrastructure utilities need to be ran, paid for. With a TIF in place in an industrial park, the increment coming back to help offset the cost of that initial infrastructure. That's an example of.
They did that very thing in town. We bought 100 acres of undeveloped land and created a business park, industrial park with it, and located a large warehousing facility into that, built a quarter-million-square-foot building, and so that valuation went on to the tax rolls and was retained to help pay a portion of those project costs. I don't remember just where it was, but I think stormwater drainage was part of it. I think we actually paid for the land out of the TIF revenue stream as well, so, and I'm pretty sure that project would not have happened if not for TIF.
Well, it seems like everybody's had something to say. Comes no surprise, on the KLC, the Kentucky League of Cities website, and I'm going to read it, and I usually don't like to want to read things, but it says, "TIF is intended to help local governments jumpstart improvements in declining or underperforming urban areas where development would not otherwise occur." In other words, but for this, i.e. the TIF, development wouldn't happen. I think it says a lot. I think there's a big moral hazard, just saying.
I think this was just an informational question for us to learn more.
Well, I think that's a pretty important piece of information right there, in my humble opinion.
Thank you very much.
Steve?
Thank you.
Okay. City Managers Report?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Any comments tonight? Well, considering all the bad weather, we still had a really decent Lower Town Art Festival. Saturday afternoon and night was slammed, so...
I went down in my rain boots and left in flip-flops, but...
There was a lot that went on last weekend in the rain, but I got to meet a lot of the vendors and welcomed them to Paducah, and they all, Alan, they all said, you know, "We love it here in Paducah. We love Paducah." And, you know, they're accustomed to different weather elements in their line of business, so they really didn't seem too upset about all of it.
I talked to one fellow, and he said, "Hey, look," he said, "oftentimes I've been at these kinds of arts and music festivals, and I'm staying in mud." He said, "I'm on the street," he said, "I'm pretty happy." So...
All in all, I think that's well... Any public comments? We do not have an executive session tonight, so some meetings adjourned.